We're going to call this meeting to order for August 22nd, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
And for the record, the mayor is absent today. Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez.
Here.
City Attorney Ashley Smith.
Here.
The clerk is present. Ms. Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right, we will move on to the invocation led by Pastor Don Hoffman and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Father, I just pray that we put the anointing of the Holy Spirit over this council.
And all the people here as well. But God, give them the, give them the wisdom, give them the knowledge, give them the discernment to make good righteous decisions according to your will. And we thank you, Lord. We bless also the police department, the fire department, all those involved in the, in helping, whether it's the ambulance and, and all those members, Father, that are all part of this community. And so, Father, just put an anointing upon each one of them. And we pray this in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Hoffman.
Thanks, Commissioner McDonald.
We will move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Paul.
I'll second.
I do believe at this point we want to pull item number 12. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
So we will pull, make that amended. Right.
Motion.
Okay. Motion, Commissioner Paul. Second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. With that, we will move on to presentation on the opportunity to create a coffee shop accelerator in partnership with the city of Alamogordo. Presenter is Nolan Ojeda with Alamogordo Main Street.
Thank you, Commission, Mayor Pro Tem, and city staff for hearing me out today. Really, this is kind of just an update to let you guys know kind of what we've got planned out and just really give you guys some update on some wins we have going on. Because it's really fun to come tell you guys good news. So recently, we were selected for the AARP Community Challenge Grant. You've probably seen some of our pictures and stuff to beautify the alley on the Eastern Block, 900 Block. So it's the, just the one alley. We've been doing really good. We received $12,603 from ARP and we've raised an additional $6,850 in sponsorship. So that brings the project to almost a $20,000 project. We're kind of hitting a lot of benchmarks with this project. It's not just a beautification project per our city contract, but actually, it's going to impact, hopefully, it'll have a positive impact on some of the crime and houseless community that have been hanging out in that alley. Recently, one of the property owners was actually physically attacked by someone in that alley. So there's several studies on activating and beautifying space and decreasing crime. There's the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Program that has found that through what's called natural surveillance, crime decreases exponentially when you actually activate and have people in a space because there's a lot of eyes watching. So we're, we're trying to address some of the problems we're having for safety. Also, we're looking at anywhere from six to 12 murals, seven of which would be community-involved murals. We're partnering with Alamogordo Public Schools. We're also partnering with some of the homeschooling organizations, Holloman Spouse Organization, getting the kids involved on these murals as well as the children's music theater and, and then also just general community members who want to come out and paint. So this is adding to our massive application we're going to have to put in to get the state designation of an arts and cultural district. So we're ticking off that box as well. Right now, we, oh, we're also partnering with Many Hands. They're a community garden organization newly, newly established here in Alamogordo. We're ordering these planters. They have lifetime warranties and they're self-watering. So you only have to water them maybe every two weeks. They hold about 30 gallons a pop. So this is also going to act as a community garden space back there. So we're looking at benches, lights, murals. We are getting our benches from a local person here, a local craftsman here. So we're pretty excited about that. We're also going to have some shades, seating areas, all that good stuff back there. I will say, Commissioner McDonald, thank you for coming out for the alley cleanup. That was awesome with the Boy Scouts and everybody. We had a great time. They did an awesome job. And then also, our business owners and our property owners are super excited because one of the other reasons we wanted to target this alley was when construction starts on New York Avenue, if we can beautify and activate the space, it, it gives them a more welcoming rear entry if they need to use it during construction. So it's a multifaceted project. All right, so the coffee shop accelerator. Per our contract, we had listed several projects of opportunity. These projects were only to be undertaken if we could find funding or resources to do them. We went to the county and requested $56,000 to hire a part-time ACD coordinator, which is pretty standard for when you are establishing and have established an arts and cultural district. And we also asked for funding to do a coffee shop accelerator. We received $40,000 from the commission, so that leaves us at a $16,000 deficit for the total program, mainly because as of right now, I just do not have the capacity to run an accelerator by myself on top of the entire Main Street program. So we need a part-time employee to do that. So moving forward, we are trying to seek other fund, funding opportunities to make up that $16,000 deficit. But there is a good chance, as per our contract, we're asked, we asked the city if they would remain open to the opportunity of possibly partnering with us on these projects if we can get them partially or mostly funded via other avenues. So like I said, it's a $16,000 deficit. But as of right now, we're hoping to launch in January. We've got our basic kind of layout for how the program will run. It's a two-phase program. Phase one will be to bring people into a classroom setting, six weeks, meeting once a week for about two hours. It walks them through with Tricia, the Small Business Development Center. It will help walk them through creating their business model. They'll do customer discovery surveys. They'll actually have to go out there and talk to who would be their potential customers. It'll walk them through their necessary permits and licenses. We're looking to partner with Learn New Mexico since they have the Serve Safe program there. So it's, it's going to be pretty all-inclusive. It'll also include branding, budget, taxes, all that good stuff. Phase two is the hope to actually open them physically for six weeks in a spot. To move to phase two, you must complete phase one and you will have to apply for both phases of the program. So it's not just a free-for-all. Phase two will be, we will provide basic materials, very basic materials in order to operate the business. We will help them on a larger scale with some more extensive branding products. So actually, helping them design their logo, maybe get some materials out there, marketing materials, all that stuff. We let them run for six weeks. They report to us. They do have to pay because we are putting up this upfront cost. They are on the line to give us 5% of their profit at the end of the six weeks to try to renew some of that funding we're going to put into, especially the, the throwaway items like to-go cups and plasticware and stuff like that that we'll be providing upfront. As of right now, we have about, I would guess, four or five people that would be interested in participating. We've had strong interest from ground, grounded in Las Cruces. They currently have a coffee shop there and they're interested in testing the market here. They're very successful. They are located downtown, so they kind of know the, the runaround for how, how things operate in the downtown. We've also been talking to Otero County Advocates for Developmentally Disabled. They're looking to open some kind of coffee shop program that would actually provide opportunities for disabled folks to learn life skills. So we're looking at them partnering with us as kind of a pilot program and hopefully, it'll help them achieve greater funding opportunities later if they can prove their concept. And then we have quite a few, we have one pop-up coffee place, KJ's. I don't know if you guys know it. It's interested. And then quite a few just community members that are interested in running through the program, if nothing else, the first six weeks, to get kind of their feet underneath them. So really, I don't have anything else for you guys, except I'm here to answer any questions you guys have about either the alley project or, or the coffee shop accelerator we're hoping to set up. I'm currently working with Evelyn and Stephanie to figure out how we would go about that in a legal way. So yeah, do you guys have any questions for me?
I do.
Commissioner McDonald.
I wanted to ask, what type of advertisement are you going to do to draw people in for that experiment?
For the coffee shop accelerator? Yeah, so obviously, it sounds kind of silly, but Facebook is king for cheap and good marketing and reach here in Alamogordo. So there'll be an extensive social media campaign around this rotating coffee shop area. Also, we'll be on, we'll be pushing it out through the Alamogordo Daily Newspaper and we'll also be working with our local radio stations to market when they're actually going to open and who's going to be in the space during what times and stuff like that.
And what space is it?
So right now, we're looking at four spaces. One including, I'm trying to convince the Flickinger for Patrons Hall, since it was previously a coffee shop. So it's known. They do have people there that try to come in thinking it's still a coffee shop. So that's kind of our, top of our list if we could get it. But also, there's a vacant space next to Alamo Jump we're looking at. And there is a vacant building on the 900 block that we're also looking at as a potential.
Any other questions? Thank you, Nolan, for that presentation.
Yes.
And we will follow up with city manager and, on the details of that.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Thanks a lot. We'll now move on to public comment. We've got one individual signed up, Mr. Chuck Andreas. Would you like to come forth?
This is not really good.
On your way up, I will remind you to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. And there are no action taken on these.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Andreas. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I have some good information to give to you on personal experience. We hear so much negativity going on in the federal, state, and local governments. And so tonight, I want to make a public, positive, personal situation concerning our city government. First, last month, I was very upset because my city water was cut off without notice of any kind. So I was loudly voiced my concern to the water department. A difficult situation was diffused and met with concern, courtesy, professionalism by professional relations manager Nicole Sierra. Together, we're working on a solution, and that's positive. Also, because of that incident, I filed an IPR request and received a ton of information from your records clerk, Rachel Hughes, and her assistant, Dylan Alshire. Mr. Alshire was very accommodating to me, as we had to sit for several days to review the, the records. He has responsibility to protect those records. So he sat with me and worked with me. He was very professional, courteous, and answered all the questions. If he didn't have the answer, he'd look it up and got back with him the next day. So let me state that there are some problems that are ongoing, and these three individuals I mentioned are willing to work with me to solve those problems. I find that very commendable. Second, and I save the best for last, I want to congratulate Commissioner Sharon McDonald for being named Rotary of White Sands Professional Person of the Year. And I can understand how you received that accommodation. But I have a totally different situation, and it concerns you. And I can, on September 27th, 2022, last year, I gave a city commission presentation here about our public schools. Just prior to that, announcement announced to me, Ms. McDonald, received a personal email from Judy Raybon, President of the Alamogordo Public School Board, which contained erroneous statements and demanded Sharon pull my public presentation. This is in direct violation of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. In regard to that, there's some really, something really good came out of this, and everybody should be really proud of our commissioner. Because she could have complied or just ignored it. If it's private email, it's private email. But she brought it forward to expose it. She did the right thing. It was proper. So by her actions, she shows that she has integrity. And this makes me really happy and proud that we have representatives like this in our city, in our city community. How ironic that my presentation that night was entitled APS Schools: Behind the Scenes. And here, we have two contrary examples of behind, work going on behind the scenes. One is a po, a negative and the one being positive. So the actions of the above individuals make me so happy to live in this community. I have written a complimentary letters to the respective employee supervisors, and I just want to make my personal positive experience public. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It's not often that good deeds go, go noticed. We always get the, the negative side of things most of the time. So appreciate that, Mr. Andreas. We will now move on to the city manager's report. Stephanie Hernandez.
I don't have one, Mayor Pro Tem.
You're trying to help me with my timeframe, huh? Yeah, there you go.
I was going to pull everything off for you.
Yeah. All right. So with that, we will move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything for tonight? Nothing special. No. I'll just make a quick comment. Mayor is out traveling, taking her daughter, her granddaughter to college, and we just want to wish them safe travels. And I know she's been super excited about this, this trip. So like I said, just safe travels for the family and, and good luck. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on there that any commissioner would like to pull? No, no. If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner McDonald and a second.
I'll second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Reardon.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye. Motion passes six zero. And there have been no items removed from consent agenda. We will move on to new business. I guess that would be item number 11. Consider an act upon approving the vehicle transfer to Otero County Tulareosa Basin Regional Dispatch Authority under the Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP. Is that presentation going to be?
I'll take it. This is just a request to approve our transfer to Otero County. All of our dispatchers have moved over, I believe officially as of August the 8th. So this was the vehicle that belonged to our dispatch. So we're just requesting approval to transfer it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that? Do I have a motion to approve the vehicle transfer?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Item number 12 has been pulled off the agenda. So we will move to item 13. Consider an act upon resolution 2023-31 declaring 1218 Post Avenue to be so ruined, damaged, and dilapidated that it is a menace to public comfort, health, and peace or safety. And we will turn it over to Josh Sizer, Code Enforcement Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Acting City Manager Hernandez. Tonight, I bring forth to you 1218 Post, a structure that has come onto my desk as potentially dilapidated out in the Walker area of Alamogordo. It is located on the corner of Post and Collins. The red star indicates where this structure is. As you can see from this picture, it was subject of a structure fire. There's not a whole lot of it left, but it is out there on Post and Collins. This goes over some of the laws and codes that I go over every time, just some of the state statute, city ordinance, and International Property Maintenance Code about timeframes and things that have to be done in certain times once this gets to commission. On October 17th of 2018, there was a structure fire that consumed the majority of this residence. And December of '22, the code enforcement officers made aware of a potentially dilapidated structure and conducted investigation. On the same date in December of '22, an International Property Maintenance Code letter was sent to the owner listing seven violations of International Property Maintenance Code and how to correct them, as well as contact information. In June 22nd of 2023, I applied for and was granted an administrative search warrant by Chelsea Judicial District Court Judge Jessen. And on June 28th, I executed that search warrant on the property. Some of the violations on this property were vacant structures and lands, which says, it shall be in a clean, safe, and secure condition. Exterior, general for the exterior of the structure shall be maintained in good repair, structurally sound and sanitary. Windows, skylights, and door frames shall be kept in sound condition, good repair, and weather tight. And interior surfaces shall be maintained in good, clean, and sanitary condition. We're just some of the few that were on that, that list. These are photographs of the property back in December of 2022 from Public Right of Voice. Some of them have been zoomed in just because, to get a better look at what was going on with this property. But as you can see, in December, it looks like, it looked like a house that caught fire and has been completely ruined. Most of the structure, the, the southern part of the structure, the front part of it, is completely gone due to the structure fire. The back two rooms were still intact, but getting, getting to them is quite rough. Even the floor is, is gone and most of the front half of this, of this structure. As you can see, there's, there's several areas of, of deterioration, and there's burns beyond just regular charring to this. These pictures are of the search warrant. As you can see, there is pretty much nothing left of this residence out on Post and Collins. There wasn't a whole lot to photograph because there's not a whole lot left of it. So it has been standing like this since December of '22, probably since December of '18, but that's way before my time here in code enforcement. But it, it just has been in this deterioration state since December of '22. So I ask you to approve the abatement of this property. And I will stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I don't know if it's legal or not, but can we continue? You just finished burning it down to save on, what do you mean, on cleanup costs? It's easier, I mean, can the fire department do that or?
I think we've asked that question before.
Ask fire. Training for fire.
That's what I mean. I'm being serious, actually. Could we?
It's not our property. If it was ours, we could. But it's not our property.
Okay. So since it's not ours, we can't burn it down.
Is there a reason it took about four years for this process to start after the fire?
I don't have an answer for you, Mr. Commissioner. As, I'm sure you all are aware, I have been hitting the ground running with a lot of these dilapidated structures that are in town. So why it took so long, I can't answer that question. But it's here. You'll be seeing a lot more of me with several meetings going forward.
Probably more COVID. It slowed things down for, what, two, three years or so?
Okay.
Let's make a motion to approve resolution 2023-31.
Okay. I got a second.
Second.
Commissioner McDonald. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Reardon.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Thank you. And go ahead and stay there because we'll move on to item 14. Consider an act upon resolution 2023-32 declaring 803 Arapahoe Trail to be so ruined, damaged, and dilapidated that it is a menace to the public comfort, health, and peace or safety in ordering its abatement.
Good evening again. 803 Arapahoe Trail has been, one that has been on our code enforcement's radar with several complaints since I've started. It was weekly, and since we've been there, we've done, been a presence on this block. We haven't gotten as many complaints because the neighbors do realize we are doing something. It just takes time. 803 Arapahoe Trail is the second residence in going northeast-ish on Arapahoe off of Florida. It is where the red star is. As you can see, the structure, now the structure, this structure I bring you tonight, the structure itself does not have any real problems as far as International Property Maintenance Code. Code goes. It is the health concerns with the trash and things outside the front yard and in the backyard, as well as inside the residence that you will see with the photos that are gonna come, how bad this property is, and a health hazard it is to the neighborhood and the community. Again, going over the laws and codes that are, once I bring it to you, there are certain timelines that have to be met. So on April 19th of 2023, I did receive a complaint on this property. I knew that there were several complaints on this property beforehand, but I took it and started my own investigation and my own case on this because I knew how many complaints we were getting on it. So I took this over April 19th of 2023. On May 23rd, 2023, I did, after trying to find somebody responsible for that property and not being able to, I did mail an International Property Maintenance Code letter to the listed property owner who is, I found through, through looking, is deceased. There are people living in this residence that claim to be relatives of the deceased, but they have been unable to provide me any documentation, and there might be some reason to speculate against that. That letter was returned to me. I did post it on the property as per International Property Maintenance Code. On six, I'm sorry, June 16th, I did have Paul Bennett, our Facility Maintenance Manager, go and do an inspection of it from the public roadways, alleyway, streets. And he, he knew there to be no electrical in the dwelling. The roof was damaged and needs upkeep paint, and there is some, a post missing on the back porch. But like I said, nothing really that would have made me want to bring this to you. I would have tried to work with property owners in this case heavily prior to bringing it to you. On June 22nd, I did apply for and was granted administrative search warrant from Chultsu Judicial District Court Judge Jessen. And on June 27th, I did execute that search warrant. Some of the International Property Maintenance Code violations are disposal of rubbish. The occupant shall dispose of rubbish in a clean and sanitary manner. Same thing goes for disposal of garbage. Needs to be in a clean and sanitary manner. And water supply. The water supply system shall be installed and maintained to provide a supply of water to all plumbing fixtures. This is one where water has been shut off, and they will take a straight pipe and straight pipe the water. We have been in contact with the Utilities Department about this particular address with that going on, because we usually check the meter every time we're there. These, this is the condition of Arapaho back in, it looks like May of 23, I'm sorry, April of 23. This is leading up to the front door of the property underneath that carport. There is a ton of just trash and rubbish underneath that carport, and you have to step over things and almost hurdle to get to the front door. And this is not as bad as the backyard. The backyard, these pictures, I went by this residence today, you cannot see this backyard. There is actually a Ford Ranger in this backyard that you cannot see because of all the trash and rubbish in the backyard. It is piled so high. They've tried to make this fencing higher, but you can still see, you, you can't see the back door from the alley at this residence. It is, and you can kind of see the Ford Ranger. If you look real close in the center on the left-hand picture, you can kind of see the tail, the fender of it, but it, as I, as I say, you can't really see that, that automobile there. This is the interior of the structure. The interior of the structure was, was very bad. We had to take several breaks, and we were only here, our search warrants only last 45 minutes, an hour, and this one took us quite a bit longer because we had to take several breaks to go outside for fresh air during this, this search. There is stuff piled and alleyways throughout the entirety of this, of the inside of this residence that is just, I don't know how people are, get through it to be here. So lots of, lots of rubbish, lots of garbage. There's even household garbage inside that's not in bags. It's just thrown about the property inside the residence. So I take this and ask you to approve my resolution, and I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions?
Do, so exactly what are we asking to do here? Are we asking to go in and clean it?
That is, that is what we're gonna, that, should resolution pass.
I was doing a little research on something real quick while you were talking, so.
We would hire a company to go in and clean that.
Basically clean all the trash out of it.
Yes.
The furniture.
We, we would take care of all that trash. We'd hire a company to do it because we've already tried to get the residents who are staying there to do it, and they just keep adding more and more to it. They won't do anything.
This lady, I, I know this lady, I think most of us know this lady. She didn't have any relatives of any kind or?
Not that we can find. The lady that was there, I know from previous careers pretty well, and I have speculation, some doubt, but she does say that she is a relative of that.
Of Ms. Carley, or Ms. Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Carley.
Yeah. It's showing here on accessories that it belongs to June Carley, but I don't know, that was all the way back to 2015, so. What are we gonna do with it after we clean it? Just lean it?
Lean it.
For whatever we got in it? And then here in another year, the county's gonna be fighting us for it because she's two years behind property tax-wise too, so we'll be fighting the state for it or?
How much is it?
She, 2022 is 516, 2023 is 516. So they go one more year, then the state will foreclose it and sell it on the courthouse steps.
So.
How's that gonna work?
Yeah, so I've had to actually do that research because the county has been starting foreclosures on different properties.
But it won't go till the third year.
So one of the things I found was that our liens still remain, even if it's sold. So like whoever purchases from the state, they would still have to pay us because our liens still remain. And I found that from the state because I reached out to them and got that confirmation.
So the understanding is that if we approve this item tonight, the city will get this property cleaned up and place a lien on it? What, what happens if this just gets piled up again from the same quote-unquote squatters?
What are we gonna do to address the actual issue?
That is something that we were working, I'm working with Ashley in legal and PD, trying to figure out where, where we can and can't do certain things. So it's, it's a long process, but ultimately, it's gonna be restarting this process again.
Yeah, because I see this getting piled up again before it goes into foreclosure process or whatever as well.
Well, I think she had it paid off, but typically when something like this happens, doesn't it, it would go to probate?
Yeah.
To figure out who owns it, wouldn't it? But there's no family members. Actually, I think we're probate judges right here in the audience.
We do have a special guest in the audience.
So should resolution get passed?
Yes.
Every time a resolution is passed, the very next day, I print out my condemnation placards and I go and post them.
Okay.
Those condemnation placards say, you can no longer live here. You can be here to work on what it is that needs to be worked on, but you can't live here. So tomorrow, should resolution passed, I will get with PD. We will go over there and tell them, you gotta go.
And a victim. We're gonna have that squatter's rights and then, like I say, I'm just worried that, you know, once we condemn it, then technically we could tear it down, correct? So this one just needs to be cleaned. It doesn't need to be torn down.
And their, their trash and rubbish has gotten so bad that it's spilling over to 801. There's a lot of stuff at 801 too. And we're trying to work with that, that property owner, the daughter is actually, because the property owner is deceased, the daughter of that one, we've been in contact with and made aware of the situation at 803.
Okay. I don't have a problem with us cleaning it up, but I just don't want to see it torn down.
No, and that's not the goal on this one.
Okay.
Could the squatters legally make some claim that because they're the source of the garbage, that it's their property, and even if they're evicted, the city can't clean it up?
I mean, obviously squatter rights is always an issue, of course, but with us condemning it, we're saying it's, you know, public health hazard.
So if we pass this, we take over the house and everything in it to, in order to clean it up?
To get it up to code, you know, to a code or, yeah.
This one's a little tricky. I mean, it's kind of tricky, huh? Because it's, it's still inhabitable, but it's not sanitary. Could we allow her to talk?
I'm okay with that. Is that okay? Yeah, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium and obviously introduce yourself if you don't mind.
Yeah, it's no problem.
Thank you.
Probate Judge Latonya Boyce and Dusty, Mayor Pro team and the commissioners. So on this one, it did come through my court for probate, but I couldn't go through with it because it, they never did, the daughter, who claimed to be a daughter, she had emailed me a will, but to provide the original will, if they don't, then it has to go to district court. So I do know it went to, I transferred to district court, and so it comes out to whatever district judges, the district judge has ruled on it. I don't know, the outcome didn't follow through. So that would determine if a personal representative was appointed. So then if the personal representative is appointed, then that individual would be able to handle the state affairs in that.
Sure. Okay.
So, and then that, so if that daughter proclaimed daughter is living in the, in the home right now, depending on the outcome of district court order is if she's still able to still be there or not. So I really don't know those situations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Mayor Proton, so we were discussing Chief and Ashley and I, and if it is declared, we believe that the city can go in there, board it up, and lock it.
Do we need to determine the outcome of the district court case first?
That would be an Ash question.
Because i- if she was appointed by that district judge as the representative, and we, I mean, granted, she needs to clean it up, but do we have rights to boot her out of that house if the judge declared her as the representative of it? You know, to clear up?
I mean.
You see the legal issue? You're the lawyer.
Yeah, yes, and I mean, I can look it up.
Okay.
I don't have my, my laptop's kind of on the fritz at the moment. And one of the problems I know, like, we've been having too, is we've been citing pretty much everyone we can. I know that code cited, was it like three different people? Two, two people concerning this property, and we haven't been able to get anything done. We've taken them before municipal court. They get slapped, you know, slapped on the hands, and then nothing happened. So this is kind of codized like last ditch effort to try to get this place cleaned up, but.
Is it, you said it has no power or no water?
It has, well, they straight piped the water, and we had it, we called out utilities to remove it. Is it probably straight piped again now? Probably. I didn't stop to look.
There's no electricity, and there's probably obviously no gas.
If I remember correctly, because I did call utilities, if I remember correctly, it did not have electricity, but it did have gas still.
I think it's in there, you, the name was changed on the billing.
I think it's what it says in here. Yeah.
Yeah. Like I say, I don't have a problem with cleaning it up. I just want to make sure we're not doing something that we're gonna end up paying for later.
In my, in my opinion, this, this particular case, we should have enacted the emergency clause and just abated it right away. But because of how long it took, we had to take this step.
We had to take this. Okay. Yeah. I'll just, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2023-32 pending, well, go ahead and approve it, but then you guys do a little research on that district court case to make sure we're not getting ourselves in trouble.
Before we take any action, I will make sure that we look into that.
I just don't want to end up paying to replace a bunch of stuff or rebuild a house or something like that.
Sure.
Anyway, my motion's on there to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Rorden. We have a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Paul. Will the clerk please call the, call the rule?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Rorden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to item number 15. Consider an act upon resolution 2023-33 encouraging citizens to contact Governor Lujan Grisham and request pretrial detention reform and be placed on the agenda for the upcoming 30-day session. And this one will be led by Commissioner Carl Melon.
I'm gonna actually introduce it, Mayor Proton.
Okay.
So as you recall, on the July 28th meeting, that was a special meeting for the budget, we said that we're gonna keep the conversation going to ensure that Officer Ferguson's murder does not get forgotten, won't get forgotten here, but we want to make sure it doesn't get forgotten around the state. And also hopefully to make some change in an effort to, you know, in his name, to make some positive changes for the law enforcement community. I also promised that we're gonna keep all the commission updated with any thing that we were doing. So I've been working with Commissioner Melton on this one, and we're here to just kind of get, keep you guys in the loop and a call to action for our citizens. I do want to say that our local legislators have been extremely responsive to our requests. Sometimes people don't want to talk to us, and they're out there, you know, forwarding emails and getting us in contact with the right person. So a shout out to our local legislators. And they're just basically help educating us all, yeah, help educating us on the issues that led up to Officer Ferguson's death. The one thing that, the one conversation that we are continually having is to make sure that pretrial services is properly funded. We do have a meeting on October, in October 5th, I believe. Is it the 5th? In, in which we'll be talking about the needs of pretrial services with, with that department. We, we felt that it was a, that a resolution would be impactful because as we stated in the previous meeting, it's a 30-day legislative session. So we got together, Carl, Commissioner Melton wanted to make sure that we get a call to citizens to help us in that effort. So that's what this resolution is, just requesting that citizens contact the governor's office. We put the address on the resolution or the phone number so that we can ensure that the conversation keeps going and that we can hopefully see some change. I'm not sure if I, I said everything?
Yeah, I'll add to that a little. This may not seem like a lot, but the governor herself has in written statements hinted at pretrial reform of some kind. She's open to it. Not everyone clearly is. The issue is, you know, the bills, similar bills have been brought in prior sessions, but they've never passed the committee just because they haven't been a priority. But even though this, you know, we're putting in citizens' hands, and it doesn't seem like a lot, just a couple dozen phone calls, you know, from the city where this tragedy happened, it, it might move it up the priority.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
And I do want to just mention, like I said, we're gonna keep the conversation going, so we expect to have another resolution next month, depending on what the conversations lead to.
And I'll just make a comment real quick that I do appreciate the staff's continued persistence in this too as well. I know you guys are working a lot behind the scenes on top of what we've presented at these meetings, and we appreciate that. Have anyone that'll make a motion on item 15?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2023-33.
I'll second that.
Got a motion from Commissioner Burnett and a second from Commissioner Rorden. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Rorden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Now we'll move on to item number 16. Discuss and provide direction for the joint meeting with the Otero County Commission, and we'll turn it over to Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez.
Me again. So I just kind of wanted to give you a status update and to kind of let you know where, where the staff is. The meeting is on October 31st at 2:00 PM at the Civic Center. This, we want to, the city staff are a bunch of perfectionists, so we want to make sure that everything is done right. So our bits team is actually building a similar unit or whatever, tower, whatever setup that's here so that we can keep it at the Civic Center for any future meetings, whether it's joint meetings or just meetings for the community. Our Community Affairs Department is making sure that the Civic Center will be ready and that the setup is appropriate for all 10 commissioners. The city clerk and the legal, we're getting information to make sure we follow the appropriate protocol. As you know, a joint meeting hasn't happened since, I believe the last one was April 2016, so this is kind of new ground for this staff. We just want to make sure we're following all that. It's gonna be a workshop. It's going to be a workshop. There won't be any action taken. It'll be more of the county and the city decide that this is something that you want staff to work on. Staff will work on it with the county. We'll come back to you all with a solution or whatever it may be. And like I said, we know that this reflects on the city and that we're just always trying to make things as awesome as possible. We work really hard at that. I'm not, I have another item after that, but I didn't know if anybody had questions on that particular part or had any comments.
Questions, comments on that section?
I was just wondering, who is the city or the county going to be responsible for like keeping the minutes, getting it on the internet?
So the city will be the ones who are in charge of that setup that we're doing at the Civic Center. Rachel will have the setup over there. We'll do the minutes and we will stream it on YouTube.
Okay, you have another?
Oh, yeah, so I had sent an email, I don't remember when, it's been a couple of weeks now. If you remember, Commissioner Paul, I believe it was Commissioner Paul, had said that to have a couple of items, that way it's not a long meeting and we can actually make some headway on it. I sent a request to each of the commission. I've received some of your comments back. If you could, or maybe we can discuss it now if you'd like. What would you like to see on this? Because on September twelfth, I will bring back all of your suggestions so you can narrow it down to three with two alternatives to make sure there's no overlap. We can discuss it now. Right now I have broadband for the entire Otero County. Joint effort to create change for the catch and release laws. Property tax money that comes to the city, to the city. Efforts for mental health facilities, affordable housing, animal control and the convenience centers. Is there anything else that anyone on the commission wants to add to that?
Yeah, the flooding between scenic and Florida.
Anything else? And you can, not to put you on the spot, so you can send me an email if you think of something. Like I said, this will come in September twelfth so that everyone can discuss what, as a commission, what the top three priorities are.
Are we going to discuss a date at that time as well?
A date?
Yes.
It's October thirty first.
We've got to schedule it different than Halloween.
We can. The direction was to get some dates in October. The first date that was a.
Did we give that direction? I don't remember that.
It was in, so it came from both Susan and Mayor Payne and Commissioner Mark Art.
Last I talked to you guys, we were talking like October second, October third.
So October third was the most availability and in fairness to Mayor Payne, since she's the one who called the special meeting. She will not be back until I think later in that week. I don't remember what.
She called the special meeting?
Mm-hmm, so for any special meeting that the city has, either the mayor or two commissioners have to call it. In this instance, she called it for us.
Well, I just, two and a half months down the road is is a little absurd, you know what I mean? Just seems like we're kicking the can down the road. I agree. I read some of the emails. I kind of agree with the county on that. It just seems a little far fetched to go that far out and then being on Halloween. You know, I don't know if my child.
We can do it.
Trick or treating or not that night, but.
We can do it the day, I'm not sure if it's the day before or the day after the commission meeting. I just was trying to be fair to y'all's schedule instead of having two long meetings back to back. Honestly, we haven't had a meeting since twenty sixteen. Nobody's kicking the can down the road. We're trying to be fair to the seven of you and the three of them. I personally don't believe that any one is over, any one's needs is more important than the other. So it's kind of difficult to make sure that all ten of you are equally represented.
I just thought it was odd that that we talked about the third, second, third, fourth, and then all of a sudden.
Well, I had spoken to you before, I had to get your, your dates, if you recall. I was asking you on your dates and at that time I hadn't received everybody's input. I had, I was trying to reach out to everybody individually to see if you could either answer the survey and let me know what dates better suited you. So at that time, when I talked to you, that was what it was at that moment.
So the the third is good for everybody but the mayor?
Yes. And then, like I said, we have that week is pretty good for everybody, but there was a commission meeting on that Tuesday. So if.
That would be what the?
Following week?
It'd be the following week. It'd be the second Tuesday.
Yes, and so that was the thing. It was the second Tuesday, but then the county has their meeting, I believe, on that same week, so it would have to be Monday. So that would mean both commissions would have an extra meeting that same week. And we couldn't do it on like the fifteenth or sixth?
Third Thursday, isn't it? Is there's the third Thursday?
Is there the third Thursday? I know that there's one week that worked that we had a meeting, they had a meeting, so I didn't think it was ideal to have the joint meeting on the same week. We couldn't have it around that fifteenth, that middle week because the Civic Center was booked. So that left that week, the last week.
So when is their October meeting? Is it the nineteenth?
Hmm.
It's the third Thursday of every month.
It'll be the nineteenth.
I had them all on my, on my desk. I don't know.
Be the, what the tenth and the twenty fourth. In all fairness, if nine of us can show up on the third, you know what I mean?
But I I feel that's unfair because if you and one of your fellow commissioners called the meeting but couldn't make it, I would fight equally as hard for you not, because you guys called the meeting, like I think.
We haven't officially called the meeting yet, though.
Well, I think as, as far as putting this whole thing together in a joint deal, we, I mean, the mayor's fairly important leg of this thing. I mean, surely we can check another date or something that would bring us a little closer than the thirty first.
What day is she coming back?
I don't remember. Everything's on my desk.
She was gone through most of that week is what I had heard, but.
About that last week of September.
The calendar is up on the screen if you.
Thank you, thank you, Rachel.
Can you make it bigger? It's hard to see from up here. Yeah, we got a little bit of time, I guess. You're going to bring everything back to that next meeting, correct? As far as the topics?
That'd be.
On the twelfth. Is it that the next meeting? Yes, the twelfth is.
It'd be a little tight to get it scheduled for that last week of September and then we have a meeting that week as well.
I mean, there could be a potential for like that Thursday, the twelfth of October, like a Thursday.
I believe that's their meeting.
Yes, no, there's the nineteenth.
No, there's the, I think there's the second Tuesday of every, isn't it?
On their website.
Because I checked every meeting date, so that's why I'm fairly.
Let's go to the nineteenth.
Yeah, it looks like. Oh, yeah, so September fourteenth and October twelfth is their meetings.
Fourteenth and the twelfth?
And what about the week of the sixteenth, that third week?
Uh, September or October?
October.
That is booked from the Civic Center. Our CIT trainee is booked that week. And that's why I like it's. For someone to make a comment is not that hard, as you can see, just getting the seven of you to agree. Plus, we have to have two city managers, two clerks, two lawyers.
Well, staff to get in there is not that difficult. I mean, you know what I mean? But as far as the elected officials, all of us in the same room.
Well, it's important if we want it to run because we have Rachel to do it and.
I know, understand. I don't know. I guess we can just bring dates forward on the twelfth or on the next meeting and decide at that meeting, huh? When we decide the topics?
So is it on there? Hold on, let me check real quick.
Because what time do we plan on having this meeting?
At what time were we looking at too?
Previous one was at six, but that was seven years ago when they had one. It was at six in the evening and adjourned at seven forty-five, seven forty-four.
So I put it at two. The county wanted it early and I know the most of you work, so that wasn't feasible for y'all. They like it, you like it, we like it, I'm not sure if you like, in the evening because you guys work. So I tried to have that middle ground compromise at two.
As long as I have enough advance notice and I can get off, but. It seems six of us work full-time jobs. You think they would be more willing to meet in the evenings?
I think they'll meet. If we say two o'clock, they'll, they'll probably make that work, but.
I think three or four.
I think this is why there hasn't been a meeting in seven years.
So I sent out, I'm looking for.
If it makes any difference, I asked to have one in two thousand eighteen. It just never happened, so.
Didn't ask me. Just kidding.
You weren't here.
True, I wouldn't come till twenty nineteen. I'm looking for the email where I sent the dates for October because September is out that week of.
What about if we change the location since the Civic Center's booked the sixteenth, that week of the sixteenth? What about if we find an alternate location?
Such as where?
We have a meeting room at the Bolin Alley?
That's not a facility that we can control. I'm not sure if. Bits is like, uh, to live stream it and to have, you know, all of that logistics.
What about the county? What what buildings do they have? Or the Flickinger?
Again, we don't control that. I'm not sure if y'all, they would.
We reach out and ask them if they have a venue or area that we could have it at.
Is the Taste Center an option? College?
We'd have to pay for that one.
See if the, the county, like I say, I think they have the Flickinger that they could probably utilize. And then I believe they have a bigger room down there at the county admin office.
So what?
They have their chambers upstairs, but I think there's another room downstairs that might be able to hold everybody.
So what dates are you looking for?
That week of the sixteen.
Seventeenth, eighteenth, somewhere near.
One of those days that week.
I think that weekend's open for, or that week is open for no county or city commission meeting that week.
That's correct.
So that may be a better option if we can find a location.
I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I'm personally not opposed to having two meetings in one week. I mean, I get it's a lot, but I'm fine with that.
We've had two this week.
Yeah, so the week of the ninth, like I know we're meeting on the tenth, but and they're meeting on the third.
Well, twelfth, yeah.
I mean, that Wednesday or Monday, that.
The ninth or the eleventh.
Probably will take a couple hours, probably only an hour and a half.
Yeah, and then minutes from that last one, it was like an hour and forty-five minutes. But also a ton of different commissioners too, so as far as timeframes and.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for my email that showed all the dates that you all kind of were okay with. I can't find it. Sorry.
What was the reason, the reason for the third was because the mayor's not here?
So I'm sorry, I'm looking for it and I can't. So direction, I'm sorry, can you, can, you want to see it?
The ninth or eleventh?
The, the week of the ninth or the week of the sixteenth? And then see if the county has a suitable space for us to meet in since the Civic Center's tied up.
Not that week, that's the following week.
Ours is tied up the sixteenth, right, but not the ninth?
Not the ninth.
That's correct. Yes, of October, yeah.
That training is tied up all day or in the evenings?
It's, it's our CIT training.
Is it, how, how late in the day is it tied up to?
Seven to seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
We could also reschedule our meeting on the tenth to the third, move it up a week if they are only able to meet the tenth.
I don't, I think Monday would be okay. I don't, I don't think we need to change our meeting.
Okay, does that give you enough to go on?
Say again?
Does that give you enough to kind of go on and then we'll bring it back on the, you'll bring it back on the twelfth of September? We can decide at that time?
I mean, but I mean, I just asked, we're moving it up two weeks. Does that really make a difference when all the, everything's getting? I mean, I, I get that the thirty first, but.
Can I ask who was, who was, was everybody able to make the thirty first? Or at least that was the majority time? So then why are we even considering rearranging that time right now?
Was never asked if I could make the thirty first. I got an email that said, hey, the meeting's been moved to the thirty first.
Okay, so how, so how many other people are?
But it, it is Halloween.
I don't know about you.
I understand, but the meeting's at two in the afternoon, so, I mean, we're going to a lot of trouble to rearrange a date with ten people when the majority's already said that they're available.
Confirmed the thirty first?
The thirty first.
That was the, so the third and the thirty first were the two with the most dates that were available. And that's what I'm trying to look for, that survey, sorry.
And the, and the meeting's at two, at two o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Oh, then. It'll be all right as long as we're out of there by, by thirty-six.
So why'd it take that long?
Yeah.
So I'm confused. So confused. I'm sorry, I'm, I.
You guys are messing up my timeframe here. We're supposed to have like fifteen minutes tonight, so.
We did all this work and now we're just going back.
But you can wear costumes.
I was saying, can we dress up?
Absolutely. We'll even have candy. We'll have your all's favorite candy. I'll get a poll of which one's your favorite.
So is the.
As long as the county's okay with it, we can make it work.
And they were good with thirty first. So the consensus is we'll stay with the thirty first at two.
Okay.
It, it appears with the, the minutes from the last one, it was only like an hour and forty-five minutes long. So I mean, we last.
Well, the last one, there was only the P S A, if you're looking at the twenty sixteen one.
I did notice that.
And so we're getting six items.
Multiple items, yeah.
Three from the commission, from your, from this commission and three from the other commission. So it might be a little longer.
Yeah, but that, I mean, if it starts at two, a three hour meeting would get us out by five?
Yeah, five, five thirty.
Okay.
Okay, we're not having a three hour meeting.
We might. Not tonight, that, that meeting on the thirty first.
On the thirty first.
Six, there's six or seven items?
There's six items, um, yeah.
Three from us, three from them.
So is that the consensus?
Yeah.
For now?
Okay.
Okay.
And then if anybody else thinks of some topic that they want to bring forward on the twelfth, just send me an email, please.
Okay. All right, we good with discussion on that item? Everyone? For now? Okay, we'll move on to the last item, number seventeen, appointments to boards and committees. We'll go through this fairly quickly. Parks and Rec Board, no current vacancies. One application by a current member, Christina Marzano, was received due to her upcoming term expiration. If reappointed, this will be her second term. And if anyone has any issues or does not have any issues, I will reappoint. Is that correct? So anybody, so we'll reappoint Christina Marzano to the second term. Airport zoning and zoning board, three current vacancies, no applications were received. Mayor's Committee on Aging, one current vacancy, no applications received. Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council, two current vacancies and no applications received. With these vacancies, we'll remind you, if you're interested in serving on a board or committee, you may apply in person at the city clerk's office or online via the city website. If there, no one has any further business for the good of the city, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner McDonald.
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Burnett. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's Riden.
Oh, it was you?
Yeah.
Bad hearing, I guess. This meeting's adjourned.
Dusty.